Diana and Dennis.
You say you feel conspicuous?
All right, good evening, everybody. It is 5:15 on May 26, 2016, time for the regular meeting of the Wenatchee City Council. So I've called the meeting to order. The first item would be the pledge to our flag. On terms, where are we at? I don't even know. Councilmember Kulas?
I'll do it.
Excellent, thank you.
Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Kulas. And for the record, we have all of the council members are here this evening. First item tonight are consent items, which include this evening's agenda vouchers and the minutes from the previous meeting and a couple of resolutions. I would entertain a motion if we had one.
Your honor, I make a motion to approve the agenda, vouchers, and minutes from previous meetings, and also to adopt Resolution Number 2016-26 designating voting representatives on behalf of the city to various community boards, councils, and organizations, and also Resolution Number 2016-27 appointing three city council members as voting representatives on behalf of the city of Wenatchee at the Association of Washington City's annual conference business meeting.
Second?
Motion by Councilmember Huffaker and a second by Councilmember Bailey to adopt this evening's consent items, including agenda vouchers and minutes from the previous meeting, and Resolution 2016-26 and 2016-27. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda would be citizen comment. This would be a time when, if any member of the audience wished to address the council. We don't have any items here that are going to be public hearing items. So any item either on this evening's agenda and/or on any other items, we would ask you to come up and give you three minutes. Give us your name and address for the record. I see one taker this evening.
My name's Kevin New, address 722 Highland Drive. And I just had some questions about the fireworks. And I'm just, first of all, you guys done a great job. The city's done great the last few years, and that's cool. But that's the one issue I think you guys went wrong on. But I have some questions about it. You say they have discretion on possession, correct? There's some discretion. Would there be discretion on the responsible use of safe and sane fireworks also? Or is it only on possession?
Yeah, I mean, this probably isn't the time.
I'm not trying to be...
Yeah, I mean, I think...
And I don't know what the right time is. And that's why I'm here to ask.
I mean, obviously have discretion on speeding tickets, right? I mean, if you do 37 and a 35, right? And it happens all the time, but...
But one's an actual criminal offense, one's a traffic violation.
So I think, you know, if it was me and you had questions about that, I'd talk to Captain Jones or Captain Reinfield, and they would be able to answer kind of their normal procedures for dealing with those sorts of things.
Okay. And then my other question would be, how do I go about overturning that?
Well, the council made a decision. It was six to one.
Okay. But is there a process to...
Well, again, the council sets municipal code. So some of the council members would have to change their mind and come to me and say, Frank, we've changed our mind, we'd like to deal with it again.
Okay, so one of them would have to come to you. That's on time.
Three of, four of them.
Four of them would have to...
Yeah, six just voted four. So I would want to hear from the majority of them. That's how it got on this a couple of weeks ago, was they came to me and said, we'd like to deal with it, so...
I'm just trying to understand how it all works.
Yeah, so I would have to hear...
Just like the three-minute thing, like, things were said last week. How do you go about countering what somebody else had said?
You know, you can always, you can always write stuff. Our council read all the stuff that was presented to them, they always do, and they listened to all of the comments. You heard the deliberation, I don't think it was...
Yeah, but after, it was after I made my comments, I heard some things that were said up there.
You could certainly always send them an email and say, hey, these things were said, and I disagree with them, and here's why, and they would certainly read all of those. And then if they wanted to take that into account in terms of changing their mind and bringing it back, they could certainly do that. But I would email the council members, because they ultimately have the final decision.
Right on. Thanks for your help. I just wanted to get an idea how it all works, so thank you.
Perfect. All right, thanks, Kevin.
Yep, thank you.
I think we've got a few more takers. So a hand up, sir?
Hello, my name is Tom Barrows. I'm not the Tom Barrows that owns Town Toyota, unfortunately. I own a bicycle shop. First, I want to say shame on you. I've sent 42 emails to the city council, and I've had three responses relative mostly to the mayor's special committee for sustainability for the city of Wenatchee. And as we come up on the second anniversary of that report, I'd like to know, I'd like to ask where we stand on 11 bullet points. I pretty much know the answer, but I believe it's your responsibility and incumbent upon you to communicate that to the citizens of Wenatchee. As far as I know, we're in the dark. Expand the city limits, Old Station, Sunny Slope, and pockets of Wenatchee. Well, I know Sunny Slope has not been incorporated. I don't know about the pockets, of course, Old Station has, but who knows? Combine the city Wenatchee Fire Department, Chelan County Fire. Of course, that happened, that was a good deal. Combine the city Wenatchee Police with Chelan County Sheriff. Of course, that hasn't happened. It's prohibitively expensive, but who knows? Nobody's been told. Raise X amount of money through a property tax increase. I rent, so I don't have a property tax bill, but who knows? That's not been communicated. Sell existing city surplus property. Maybe you did, maybe you didn't, who knows? Retain the $20 car tax, or car tab tax, whatever you call it, or raise it to 40. I don't pay my tabs until September, so I don't know, but who knows? Raise approximately 3/4 of a million dollars through a BNO tax, $70 per head, per full-time equivalent employee. Who knows? Where's that stand? As a business owner, I'm not aware that that's been incorporated. Increase electric utility tax from 6% to 10%. I believe that has not happened. Who knows? Explore discussions with PUD to combine water systems. Who knows? And if anybody does know, they know that's going to take years to sort out. And this was a mandate written out in June 2014 that said this had to happen, all of these had to happen for the viability of the city. And we're in the dark. Actively pursue more efficient maintenance of city parks, et cetera. Who knows? I walk through the park every day, it looks like it's the same. Identify areas that...
Your three minutes is kind of wrapping up, so keep getting to that.
Okay, I'm almost done. Identify pieces of the city, pool, museum, et cetera, that could be offloaded to another entity. Who knows? The point is, who knows? And the final point is, of all of this, of saving money, where is the growth initiative that balances saving money? Thank you.
Thank you. And just so you know, all of those things that are on that list, if we did them, would happen here in a public meeting with the same robust discussion that we had regarding fireworks. So if you continue to come to public meetings, all of that stuff, if it happens, all has to happen here.
Okay, well, the last agenda or description, this was published February 2015.
Right.
So where's the 2016? It's May.
Which one's that? The mayor's...
Report and your report.
Yeah, no, we've got a new one.
It's in the lobby.
Yeah, it's in the lobby. We have a new one out there.
That's my mistake.
All right, thanks, Tom. Anybody else wish to address the council? See, no other takers. We have a number of presentations and proclamations tonight. The first is regarding Wenatchee Learns, and they have a Business Partner of the Year presentation. So I see Diana is here, and Dennis, both come on up. Sorry I missed the lunch the other day.
It's okay, you were flipping burgers.
I was.
That's right. Thank you very much for having us here tonight. My name is Diana Haglund. I'm the coordinator for Wenatchee Learns with the Wenatchee School District, and I have my colleague Dennis.
I'm Dennis Conger. I'm the Director of Career and Technical Education for Wenatchee School District.
And on May 17, we had the honor of awarding the city of Wenatchee with our first ever Wenatchee Learns Business Partner of the Year. And I'd like to share just the comments that were shared during that introduction and giving that award with you as well. And then Dennis has some comments that he would like to add in addition to what I've said. So I'm just going to repeat what I said at the luncheon, so that you have an opportunity to hear that as well. So businesses have been involved in education since the beginning of public schooling in the U.S. In fact, if it weren't for the business community, public schools may not have started when they did. After legislators in Massachusetts denied Horace Mann's appeal for a free and public system, he turned to the business community for help. And their appeals, based on their interest in workforce development, convinced lawmakers to act. That said, in the Wenatchee School District, we recognize and value the contributions that our business community makes to our schools. We appreciate their support and impact that they have on learning year after year. We are lucky to have a special relationship with our city. It's not uncommon to spot Police Chief Robbins sporting a Dr. Seuss hat while reading Green Eggs and Ham to young students in one of our classrooms. Or our Community and Economic Development Director, Steve King, building birdhouses as part of a STEAM project. Or Mayor Coons listening to student presentations at the, excuse me, Citizen Washington, or tearing up the dance floor on Dancing With The Stars at Wenatchee High School. City staff make an impact on our schools by volunteering their time and talents in our after-school programs and in our classrooms. They take students on job shadows through the wastewater treatment plant, they serve on advisory boards, and they seek to improve our community for our kids and our families. In addition to just running the city, the staff has ignited the Mayor's Maker Movement locally and supported the development of the first-ever student-led mini maker fair in the world. They are collaborating with our schools on the creation of maker spaces that inspire kids to get excited about inventing, designing, and tinkering. And in about a week, our district will be joining them on a trip to the White House to meet with President Obama's maker team. They support science, technology, engineering, and math events and curriculum, and are key members of our beginning phases of the Apple STEM Network. They are passionate about building the future workforce and recognize the value of project-based learning and helping young people connect the dots to their future and develop a deeper understanding of their community through problem solving. They understand that learning comes alive when students apply classroom learning to the world outside. For the last two years, the city of Wenatchee has donated a full day of staff time and resources to creating a project-based learning experience where students developed a budget, where they were challenged with a budget simulation. They had to balance a complex budget, pave city streets with a shoestring, and make tough decisions that affect thousands of people. Under the expert guidance of Finance Director Deanne McDaniel, City Administrator Allison Williams, and a crew of staff from City Works, the Police Department, planning, and more, they created an experience that students will never forget, especially when those students run a red light and get a traffic cam ticket. They now know where that revenue goes. I'm sure there are more things that the city does behind the scenes that I'm not aware of, but it's only because they care so much. And we thank them for all of their work and connection with our kids to make learning powerful and personalized in the Wenatchee School District.
Hey, thank you, Diana.
So I'd just like to add, my job is to oversee and support all of our CTE programs at Wenatchee. This includes courses in every middle school, Westside High School and Wenatchee High School. We have 12 different program areas serving over 1,200 students. Everything from welding to accounting, marketing to engineering, sports medicine to journalism. And to be career and college-ready, our students need to be able to integrate and apply 21st century skills, technical knowledge and skills, core academic knowledge, and combine all those in real-world, real-life skills in career technical education, connect students to academics and training that will help them be successful in the future. Our goal is that every student will be able to graduate from high school globally competitive for work and post-secondary education and prepared for the 21st century. You're helping us do that by giving us these kinds of opportunities for our kids. Benjamin Franklin said, "Tell me, and I will forget; teach me, and I may remember; involve me, and I will learn." Mayor Coons understands the meaning of that quote. As he sat down with the students and shared the realities of the problem posed, asked clarifying questions, and had the students reflect on what their values were and where they would put their money, he deeply involved them in learning the difficult job of managing the city budget. This friendly, hands-on, up-close, personal approach really resonated with our students. In talking with our students after the experience, it is clear that the learning was deep and profound. These students have a new understanding of city government, and more importantly, a new understanding of the great people who do this work and their account. So let me share a quote from Pete Carroll that I think is a great approach to life. He says, "I always think something good is about to happen." He'd have to have that attitude to watch his team play. But my experience in working with the people here and in this city, you're all about making good things happen, and I look forward to making more good things happen. And if you didn't notice, the...
We need to get our picture taken with that and all that, so...
So thank you very much.
Thank you. Picture time.
Awesome. Thank you.
It's always a great thing to go down and have the kids here and hear all that. Our staff works over there. Come on. Bring it to the kids. Blink, blink.
Instagram.
All right. Snapchat? Sure. Kids do.
We've got our makers people up here.
Tammy, will you put it on there? So we just wanted to, we got another invitation to send a team to the White House. And so they get the opportunity to do a quick presentation, and so we just wanted to run through this really quickly. So Ron Brown, Wenatchee School District, and Guada, Stacy Lockhart, Wenatchee Valley College Foundation, you know...
Hi, Karen. Nice to meet you.
I'm the basement dweller with the robotics team.
And then Chad Roseberg from North Central Regional Library District will be going. And so this is a, we showed this presentation to you last year after they came back, but we just updated it, and thanks to Eduardo, who gave it some little special effects. So of course, we talk about, you'll have an opportunity to talk about where we're from. And the really cool thing about the regional library is they have some wonderful statistics about their outward-bound makers' efforts in really rural. They're getting great responses up in Republic and some of those, in Curlew, yes. So that'll be a wonderful...
Having their mobile makers van up there and doing all that?
They actually had Lego come in and train them on Lego robotics.
Oh, cool.
Yes. So they'll have wonderful stories to tell. And so we have our history here. We are an innovative area. It's beautiful.
We're in a fix now.
A little bit about our demographics and who we are, and our youth bubble, and how critical it's going to be to engage our youth for the future. The efforts that have happened here with the Mayor's Maker Forum, the Mini Makers Fair, and TEDx that kind of got things started. And then the conversation that's continued. So these are a couple of photos from last year's Mini Makers Fair. In the corner is the museum maker space.
There I am, in a mess, probably.
And this is from the Guada STEM effort that was done down at Pibus Market. It just shows the market beautifully and the kids there. And then the partners who will be there, you've got the library, and that wonderful front-page story from the Wenatchee World, as well as listing the partners that will be there. So this will be a little bit about what they'll be able to bring back to the White House. And just wanted you to acknowledge them and give them their official sending off, and I'm going to give them this presentation.
We want to, there are, how many? There are nine communities coming? Nine?
Oh, great.
Nine, ranging from Chicago and...
Pittsburgh.
Pittsburgh.
We're definitely the smallest.
We are the smallest by millions.
Were you the smallest the last time, too?
Yes.
Yeah.
Now, we had a few that were maybe just a couple hundred thousand bigger than us. Now I think we're the closest, truly closest by a couple million.
Good.
Which is good.
And how's the museum maker space? I actually went in it the other day and looked...
Wonderful.
Yeah, it was pretty cool down.
It's such a mess.
Legos everywhere.
We just had 74 pounds of Legos arrive today, too. It's crazy. But anyway, we will have an open house on June 29, and you will all be invited, and that's my goal for getting all, everything cleaned up and sorted, so it'll all be wonderful.
Good. And so the four of you are leaving when?
They leave on Monday.
Monday morning.
4:30.
Oh, on the 5th, yes.
5:40. Yeah, yeah. So we spend all day Tuesday there at the White House, and we come back on Wednesday.
Great. Karen, thanks for leading the charge for our valley, and thanks you two for cheering and going.
I get to be quiet this time, and I've got these great people. Yes, it's really fun. Well, I was quiet last time, too.
What a tremendous movement. You see Ethan get a scholarship for his work, and just all this is really starting to pay off.
Karen, do we have any students going with you this year?
No, we don't. We don't. And actually, this is more of a kind of a management type of a thing. It's called Rec to Tech, and it's about how to use underutilized community spaces and to put them into the new world learning maker space type. And so that's why we have the school district going in terms of they're looking at maker spaces, and they're really doing a wonderful job right now at that also. And then we have Stacy from the foundation, because the college is very, very, very involved with, right now their library is looking at putting their maker space in, they're looking at putting in a maker space with the tools that kill you, like I like to call them that. And then we're taking Chad, who has a marvelous tale to tell. He's a year out on his grant, a little more than a year out on the grant. And their tale is quite amazing for five counties. And so we really have a lot, then we have the museum that has partnered. We partner a lot with the school. We've been in the schools quite a bit already. We actually take a mobile maker from the library, too, especially not only the classrooms, but we're now working with the different school librarians in the elementary school. It's quite fun. It's quite, it's becoming, it's gelling. And we had Columbia Elementary School come every Friday afternoon to the maker space in Columbia, I mean, at the museum, and we did an amazing, they were amazing. It was really very wonderfully fun, very supportive. So it's a ladder. We've got the continuum, and that started with the Mayor's Maker Forum, so thank you.
And we have the culminating project still in place with the Mini Maker Fair happening again this October.
Okay, good.
Yes.
Back at the Town Toyota Center again.
Back at the TTC.
And how many kids are involved in that this year? Quite a few.
We're hoping it's bigger and better.
Yeah.
And Guada's going to be a major partner with that effort. And then we've already booked the Pibus Market from May 13 through 2017 for our STEM and Technology Showcase to bring that back to the community again.
That was marvelous.
Yes.
Those are both great.
So great places for kids to really show the culmination of their projects.
Lots of amazing things happening all over the community.
Yeah.
Amazing. Very fun.
Great. Well, thank you so much for being here, and good luck. Have fun.
We represent you well.
Great, thank you.
So...
All right, so we now have a proclamation for Historic Preservation Month. Who's got that one?
I got it.
Councilmember Poyer, would you read that into the record, please?
Be proud to do this one. Whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth and sustainability development, revitalization neighborhoods, fostering local pride and maintaining community character while enhancing livability, and whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds, and whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as people. Now therefore, I, Frank J. Coontz, Mayor of the city of Wenatchee, do hereby proclaim the month of May as National Historic Preservation Month in the city of Wenatchee, and I urge all people in our community to join me in recognizing historic places for the purpose of instilling national and community pride, promoting heritage and the social, economic benefits of historic preservation. In witness whereof, I hereby set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Wenatchee to be fixed on this 26th day of May 2016, Frank J. Coontz, Mayor.
Thank you, Mike. Who's up coming to get that? It's Kirsten Kaman, and who else?
Hi. Where are you?
Hi, Wendy.
Wendy, how are you?
Kathy.
Are you getting our picture taken again?
Yes.
Is there anything we should know? Do you want to address the audience about anything? Is there any special events going on with this?
Sure.
Yes.
It's going to affect a lot.
Oh, sure. Absolutely. You're going to have that.
I wanted you guys to hear something positive. So on behalf of the Historic Preservation Board, thank you, Mayor Coons, and members of council for your commitment to historic preservation. I just wanted to share quickly, my husband and I and our three kids moved here almost two years ago, and we were very involved in our community in Bremerton. I was on the city council there, and we worked to get 1% for public art ordinance. It took my whole term on city council, and we worked to get historic preservation ordinance passed, and we didn't do that. And it was sad to see, there's great things happening in Bremerton, great things downtown, but almost all the old buildings have been destroyed. And our neighborhood that is just a few blocks away, our home is on the National Historic Register, and it now sits next door to a 60-story apartment building. And so one of the things when we were looking at a community was things like your commitment to preserving the culture and heritage of your community, which includes old buildings, and a commitment to art and things that foster pride in the community. So we're excited to be here. My husband's a teacher at the high school, and as was shared tonight, that education, the district here has a commitment to art and all sorts of different ways for kids to learn and grow. So we love being here, and thank you very much.
Well, thank you for being here, and I'm glad you came to a city that was at least somewhat progressive on those things.
Yes, yes, definitely.
Well, great. Well, thanks, Wendy. All right, Memorial Day proclamation. Who's got that to read into the record?
I have that.
Councilmember Kulas.
Whereas since the inception of our country by the establishment of the United States Constitution, it has on occasion been necessary to protect the concepts of the Constitution, and whereas at times it became necessary to resort to armed conflict to protect these concepts, which give each citizen of the United States certain inalienable rights, and whereas citizens of our great country have given their lives in the protection of these unalienable rights, and whereas each year we set aside one day to which we can revive the memory of those who have sacrificed and those who have passed on, now therefore I, Frank J. Coontz, Mayor of the city of Wenatchee, do hereby proclaim May 30, 2016, as Memorial Day in the city of Wenatchee, and I urge all citizens to join us in honoring their memory. In witness whereof, I have caused the seal of the city of Wenatchee to be fixed on this 26th day of May 2016, Frank J. Coontz, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Kulas. Dick, where in here?
I don't think Dick is here.
So I do know that the Wenatchee Cemetery at 9:00 a.m. on Monday will be their presentation, lasts about 30, 35 minutes. Then we'll drop a wreath with Mayor Lacy at the irrigation bridge over the top. We'll do that around 10:00, and I think the East Wenatchee Ceremony is at 11:00. So I'll be making a few brief remarks. If you haven't gone, I know Jim's gone to a bunch of them, and if you get a chance to go, it's a great little...
Good deal.
Yeah. So, all right. And the last would be Aviation Month. I see former Councilmember Larson here, but I think Councilmember Bailey will read something into the record.
I have that one, thank you. Whereas the city of Wenatchee and the state of Washington has a significant interest in the continued vitality of general aviation, aircraft manufacturing, aviation educational institutions, aviation organizations, and community airports. And whereas general aviation and the Pangborn Memorial Airport have an immense economic impact on Wenatchee, and whereas according to the Washington State Department Transportation
Whereas the City of Wenatchee and the state of Washington has a significant interest in the continued vitality of general aviation, aircraft manufacturing, aviation educational institutions, aviation organizations, and community airports. And whereas general aviation and the Pangborn Memorial Airport have an immense economic impact on Wenatchee, and whereas according to the Washington State Department Transportation Aviation Division, Washington is home to one hundred and twenty-three public-use general aviation airports. According to the FAA, Washington airports serve eighteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-three pilots and seven thousand, two hundred and forty-nine active general aviation aircraft. And whereas according to the Aviation Economic Impact Study, airports in Washington support two hundred and forty-eight thousand jobs and a payroll of fifteen point three billion dollars and fifteen point nine billion dollars in economic activity. And whereas according to the Merge Global Report, general aviation in Washington contributes more than three, three point one billion dollars to the state's economy, and whereas according to the Washington Aviation Economic Impact Study, Washington's eight seaplane bases support an economic output of approximately three million dollars annually. And whereas general aviation not only supports Washington's economy, it improves overall quality of life by supporting emergency medical and healthcare services, law enforcement, firefighting, and disaster relief, and by transporting business travelers to their destinations quickly and safely. And whereas the nation's aviation infrastructure represents an important public benefit, and congressional oversight should be in place to ensure stable funding for this system, now therefore I, Frank J. Coontz, Mayor of the City of Wenatchee, Washington, do hereby proclaim June as General Aviation Appreciation Month, and invite all citizens to join me in this special observance. In witness whereof, I have caused the seal of the City of Wenatchee to be fixed on this twenty-sixth day of May, two thousand and sixteen, Frank J. Coontz, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Bailey. Hey, Larson, come on up. You may not have to get your picture taken. Have we got, oh, you're getting your picture taken.
I like that.
All right, sir. Great. Good. Looks great. I've never seen so many former councilmembers. Did you, and Brian Campbell, and Karen Retha-Ford, Reese was here, all kinds of councilmembers.
We had a quorum.
So you want to see something?
I would.
We had some planned stuff.
We are? I would, thank you.
Yeah, why don't you sit down and, so we've been recorded.
Good, well, thank you, and we appreciate the support for Pangborn, both the general aviation that this proclamation's about and commercial service. I thank you that your delegation is, they said five forty AM, so they're flying out of here, which we appreciate. If you want more service, you need to use the service we have, and so that's certainly on the, on the commercial front, that's what we're interested in, is getting more service. Economic development, Jim, I'm sorry, Councilman Bailey read the numbers that are there. That's why we do it. The airport is an expensive and complex operation, and we do it at the port because it's critically important to economic development, both the, the private aircraft, the general aviation side, and the commercial side. We've got this little project, you may have heard of it, called the Thirty Million Dollar Runway Extension. It is on time and on budget, and we'll be cutting the ribbon on August eleventh, which is the seventy-fifth anniversary of Pangborn Airfield or Airport. So mark that in your calendars. We'll get you the time. We'd love to have you out there for that. That's going to be a big day for us, and we are just kicked off a master planning process, which is a year-long process required by the FAA. It'll, they'll do a forecast for general aviation and commercial aviation for Pangborn, looking out twenty years, and then from that, you know, you've got a seven thousand-foot runway, what type of service do you need, what other amenities do you need, and that helps us pay through federal dollars and with local match, the different improvements and things we need for the next potentially twenty years. So thank you again for all the support from the City of Wenatchee, and the, the airport's doing, doing good things and having a good year, and again, we appreciate the support from you and from the community.
How did the August flight, the extra flight they added last summer, how did that do for bookings?
We got a fourth flight last August. They, Alaska was a little disappointed, to tell you the truth. We had a record number of people fly through the airport, but you spread them out over four flights. The load factor, which is a percentage of seats sold, went down back into the sixties, and we've had almost thirty percent growth over the last three years in traffic out there. So we went from a sixty-one load factor market to now we're in the high seventies. So Alaska's pretty happy with us. Our air service consultant will be in town next week to update the commission and may hear him on media talking about how we've done, and right now we're doing out-of-area marketing to bring tourists to the region by air. And so he'll, he has some initial, or initial results from that media campaign that he'll be sharing, but it's gone well, and we're excited. We have so many great things in this region to talk about and to promote and to bring people here, and just doing that by air as opposed to driving from the, you know, greater Seattle area, which has been kind of our niche, certainly as a region, trying to expand that out. We're excited about that, and of course, the plane flies both ways, so if they're coming here, that helps us get a direct flight maybe to where they're from or some other hub. So that's all part of the plan, and we're working forward on that.
Great. Thanks, Craig. Any questions for Craig while we have him here? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
All right, action items. Item A would be regarding Resolution two thousand and sixteen dash twenty-eight, supporting the use of summary abatement to address fire danger from overgrown vegetation.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Steve Kane, Community and Economic Development Director. This resolution is a resolution of support. We're really not changing any code or doing anything different from the standpoint of our processes and code enforcement. What we are changing is we'd like to implement a provision of our code that's called summary abatement. And in light of the Sleepy Hollow fires and what we've learned at the National Fire Academy and through all of our Firewise Community work, is that the, the embers that result from fires, and that can be a wildfire or even just a structural fire, create a significant hazard to creating spot fires that can travel up to a couple miles. So in a situation where fire resources are dedicated in a certain location in the city, and you have this, this chance of other fires popping up, that really has put light on what happens to properties that are overgrown with dried-out weeds and vegetation right up against the house structure. Not to mention that even just a cigarette butt can cause a fire to, to ignite in that situation. So state law and our city code authorizes summary abatement when there is a public, emergency public health, safety, welfare issue or concern, and so we're requesting that the council support staff's efforts in going out and basically accessing properties ahead of a court order to address the fire hazard issue. The reason why we use summary abatement is the typical process through normal judicial abatement takes six to nine months, and of course, the fire season is over by the time that you use that process. This is also a targeted effort during the fire season. It doesn't, we're not talking about doing this outside the fire season. There's a narrow window when you want to attack vegetation. If you do it too early in the spring, then it just grows back, and if you do it too late, then you've, you've lost the season, and that risk was not mitigated. So that's the point of this resolution. It basically outlines what I just described, and if, if you pass the resolution, then we will be ready here in June to go out and address properties where a property owner is non-responsive. Generally, these are foreclosure properties. So we anticipate maybe ten to fifteen in the year where we cannot get action. Most of the citizens are wonderful. They, when, as soon as they know they have a problem, they get out and take care of the problem. So ninety-nine percent of the cases are handled just by notifying the citizens of the, of the issue.
Steve, can you clarify what the notice process is? How many notices do you send out before doing the summary abatement?
Sure. In this, in our code, the fire code, chapter three, it identifies a process where we give them a ten-day notice. So we notify them, notify the owner of record, and we'll also notify that, put a door hanger or notify the person on the residence. Oftentimes, there's nobody occupying the residence, and they have ten days to remedy the problem. If it's not done within ten days, then that's when we would implement the summary abatement.
But implementing the summary abatement doesn't mean on day eleven we're cleaning the property.
Yeah, we have to go out and get quotes, price, get a contractor lined up. So what we had anticipate doing is lining up several properties to do at one time, but yeah, it's going to be another five to ten days after that.
Does it get in front of the code enforcement board before that happens, or this is all has happened before then, or you have, you can go quicker than that now?
The code, the code enforcement board is not involved in this process. So what we're doing is identifying it, the hazard. Once we identify the hazard as being an emergency, we, like I said, notify the property owner, and then when the ten days is up, we issue a notice of summary abatement. That means that we're basically a last notice that we're going on to the property to resolve the problem. We do the, the cleanup. Any cost incurred in that cleanup will then go to, afterwards, we'd go to the courts to get, file a lien for the recovery of costs.
And again, we probably would not be using city forces for this. We'd be looking at the small works rosters that the city maintains.
Yeah.
Under, under some sort of city supervision, though?
Yes.
Because we'll be taking before pictures, after pictures, yeah.
Yeah, the key is you well document the case with pictures, and, and this is, this has relatively low risk. We're not removing garbage or debris, I mean, items from the property. We're just taking care of dead and drying vegetation.
This is strictly vegetation management.
Vegetation management only.
Fire hazard.
Fire hazard. And so you saw in your agenda report, there was a number of pictures that showed some of the problems we had last year, so.
Look at any one of those houses, that piece of cardboard that Mark showed us last week or a couple weeks ago, had fallen in any of those. You know, there's side-by-side houses with dry weeds and woodhouse structures, older structures. We'd had a real nightmare.
Yeah.
A bigger, a bigger.
Do you know if there's a service? I guess I don't personally care about the banks on foreclosure. I don't care if they get stuck with a bill. But I am kind of curious on if somebody called, called up, and they just had no resources. Do you know of any?
Yeah.
Where, do you got, does the city have something that says, hey, you know what, you can call down the Salvation Army, you know what, they'll send somebody out? So there is resources for our, our people.
Yeah, we work with, so usually this doesn't, you don't use this when the property owner's responsive, even if they have challenges. We'll partner with Catholic Family Chore Services to help with like the disabled or folks that cannot get to it, so yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's generally when you don't have, when you have a non-responsive owner, either an out-of-town owner that doesn't care, or and the house is vacated, or a bank repossession or foreclosure, yeah.
I just like to, you know, say I think this is another good tool that we, that we can have in our, in our toolkit. On your list of pictures, the bottom left-hand picture there, Little White House, that's just, you know, just down the street from me, and it was kind of early in the spring. The owner, or who, I'm not sure who did it, but somebody went in and they cut all these trees down, and then stacked all the limbs and the brush and everything up against the house. And that's the way it stood, and, and right about the time, I can't remember exactly, Steve, when I contacted you the first time, but, you know, my concern was not necessarily that, and it's a house had been abandoned for quite some time, but not concerned particularly that it burned down, I was worried about the houses on either side of it burning down. And, and so any rate, you know, we started all the process and whatever, and yeah, that nine months, so here's, we go through the fire season, and again, flying embers from a, up on the foothills could have come down, and that pile of brush and that, you know, ten minutes, and it's gone. So we just, we just need to have some kind of a mechanism like this to be able to act and get these things taken care of. We can't take nine months to take care of a potential fire danger like this. And I, you know, conversation with Steve earlier today, if during the fire, this had a torched, we got no, nobody to respond to it.
No.
We got it, you know, we could have a city block gone before somebody showed up. So, yeah, we just, they're just these kinds of things. Your responsibility is, you know, we can't, can't.
And they're hard on neighborhoods, too. They're hard to have three or four homes that are taken care of and then have something like this, and it just brings the whole neighborhood down.
Yeah.
Not that government's job is to fix that every time, but when you got a fire hazard like this.
Yeah.
I think we talked at finance, we've got twenty thousand in our abatement fund, and depending on how it goes, we may have to pop a little more money in that to keep those guys going if we continue to have problems, but seems like the right thing to do. But this isn't changing law, you're just asking for support for the summary abatement process.
Yep.
Well, your honor, I make a motion that we adopt Resolution number two thousand and sixteen dash twenty-eight, supporting the use of summary abatement to address fire danger resulting from overgrown vegetation.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Bailey, second by Councilmember Esparza, to adopt Resolution two thousand and sixteen dash twenty-eight, supporting the use of summary abatement to address fire danger. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Steve. Mayor's report, a couple, three things. We did have a meeting this morning out in Old Station regarding the annexation of Old Station. I believe it becomes effective tom, oh, oh, on between Sunday and Monday?
Twenty-ninth and thirty.
Okay. So midnight plus a second.
Twelve oh one.
As it goes to Memorial Day, Old Station will become ours. We probably had maybe ten property owners or business owners out there, so we went over, all of our department heads were there and got introduced, told them where to call for issues and problems. Had a couple of questions regarding stormwater issues, business licensing issues, got them all answered pretty well. I gave a thirty thousand-foot view of the city and, you know, why we need Old Station if we're going to try to move sewer and some of that stuff. So I thought it went pretty well. So glad to have that over with, and we're, we're moving forward, and our police department's ready to go on Monday, and our public works crew's ready to go on Tuesday, so it should be a fairly seamless process. I did sign papers today at four o'clock at Central Washington Title, so tomorrow there will be a closing on the sale of our public worksite. So that is a done deal, and so that money will transfer tomorrow, and then Mr. Lawson will be working on final plans. Just as you guys, just a different process when we were dealing with Mr. Keenan, he designed the property first and spent a whole bunch of money and then walked. Mr. Lawson is a bit more careful about that, so he hasn't designed his building yet, so he is probably turning the design team loose. He's got some rough designs, obviously, we've seen him, but, so it will take him a while to get full design and get into our building office for permits. They can do foundation permits without building permits, and guessing some of that will happen, but it may be ninety to a hundred and twenty days before we see anything going on down there. Is that kind of a reasonable? So, he's excited to be here, and we're excited to have him, so I didn't anticipate both of those things would be happening quite within a couple of days of each other, but certainly nice to have that behind us. Spent some time this week with Lloyd Pendleton. Mr. Pendleton is the champion of Housing First from Utah. He was in town for a couple of days, spent some time here with me and staff, and then he did a presentation at PIBUS. Real interesting fellow, and I think we're working on trying to get some sort of a Housing First model started here. He, his comment was, you got to get some easy wins first. Easy wins mean getting ten or twelve of your more chronically homeless that cause the most problems with your police department, and get them in some sort of supportive housing as quickly as you can, using maybe money from the city and CDBG and the hospital, and being able to make damage deposits and those kinds of things to help get these people in places, showing that the, you know, we're here to help, and as you look for more longer-term facilities and maybe even build a facility. He said, don't build a facility without case managers, because case managers are key, and it sounds like we're short some case managers between Women's Resource Center and Catholic Family, so we got to kind of resolve that issue. So we'll, we'll see where it goes, but I, very interesting, glad he was here. I think at PIBUS Market, there must have, was there a hundred people there? They were expecting forty. So really nice presentation, and we'll kind of see where that goes. Allison, what else have we been working on that I don't remember?
Just laying out the agenda for, we have a busy summer coming up, work sessions, a lot of activities as we look at expanding into Old Station. You'll have a sewer comprehensive plan, you know, a look at how that is going to work out, and making some policy choices in that regard. We will have Mike Burnett coming back in June to do a report on the one year as a result of the fire annexation and how that, how that effort is going. And then Linda was going to talk about setting a time for a city council retreat, so we can have a, a look at a date that would work for all of you, and, and we'll get together next week and plan that.
And we haven't set a time for the initial discussions regarding island annexation? Have we got a preliminary time set for that? We're going to start in July sometime with that process?
Right, so we now have a framework. It is great to have Eduardo Ramos here, helping us put together.
You guys all met Eduardo, who's our interim intern from WSU, who's working on our communications
stuff? Yes, yes, so we have that framed out, and so staff will be sitting down and looking at a couple of times in July, sending out public notices, and holding a couple of meetings about the island annexations, so.
Steve, can you look at, I know we've done this before for the last one, can you do reverse timeframes? Reverse timeframes? So assuming we're going to maybe have it effective January first or something like that, what kinds of processes and when the council would need to take action, back into times when we would want to have public meetings, and I don't think we have to meet that deadline, but it'd be nice to know the process like we had for, for out there, because this is a different process, because this is council-driven, not property owner-driven? You're asking me to come off the top of my head. No, 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 I just, I don't know what the timeframe, you know, just so that the council would kind of understand timeframes and... All right, council members, anything going on on the stuff that you've been attending? And I know Ruth and Jim were both there this morning at the annexation meeting, and...
I wanted to let everyone know that last month I approached the Spanish radio station, La Nueva, to see if we can show up routinely to, you know, just let the Latino community
For the public announcement, because they were, they were there at meet and greet.
Yes, but had they known we were dealing with fireworks and that on the same night, they would've been here for that, and I forgot that we have a TV station that wants to do a regular news.
Only trouble with KWC, you never find out when the program's gonna be on.
Yeah.
Yeah, they need to, we need to get them signed up on our, on our website, because Tammy E. notifies everything, and then we have all of that available on the website, including our council agenda, you know, all of that is, is readily available well in advance, so.
News reporter.
All right, anything else, council members?
Yes.
You want these?
Uh, two things. Last, last Tuesday night, eighteen at the Missawa Sister City, monthly meeting, went well, plans are moving forward. There will be a group of students coming in August, and there will be a potluck, and I think it's August, it's August ninth at the college, and I would assume that you would all be invited if you'd like to attend. It's gonna be a lot of fun, and all of the students are from Missawa, of course. And then the second thing is, we're beginning work on the council retreat. We need to set a date and a time for that. My, Jim has expressed he's got some concerns for July, and I will not be in town on the sixteenth, seventeenth and eighteenth of June either, so, which is the work session. So, I, what works for everyone? When do you want to do this? Do you want to think about this?
I suggest we send out a few different dates.
Okay.
So, we could talk to our spouses or senators.
We can do a doodle poll. Do we necessarily want to do it on a Thursday night? We've always done it that way.
And I just think it's easy for people, because we always have our Thursday nights kind of set aside in advance. The issue would be, well, do you take the, a fifth Thursday that wouldn't normally? I know we also plan our vacations around fifth Thursdays and first Thursdays. I'd probably stick with Thursdays and just see if there's one that majority of the people can make.
Okay, we'll do that. And then also, if you have anything that you'd like to see on the agenda, would you please send me your thoughts and ideas? Councilmember Kulas has sent me some ideas. I'd appreciate some help from the rest of you, just so we can get going. Sound good?
Yeah. Anything else? Lyle? Jim? All right, everybody. We're adjourned.
Don't forget to sign these.
Got vouchers, sure, need to be signed.
Yeah, I can have some.